Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 22nd, 2023 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Our next meeting will be March 29th, 2023 at 6:30 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Why don't we go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance? All right, and for anyone who may be speaking tonight, if you could please raise your right hand. Are you the only person speaking tonight? Okay, if you raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you. All right, so just so everyone is on the same page here, we only have four members. So what that means is that in order for a petition to pass, three of the members have to vote in favor. So if it's a split where two of us vote in favor and two are not in favor, the motion will fail. So the petition will not carry forward. So we like to give everyone the opportunity to decide if they would like to continue this to another month, where there may be five board members, or if you'd want to still continue to be heard, we'll definitely handle the petition. So just want to let everyone know. And Rod, do you have the preamble?
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefits of those who have previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed towards the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
All right, so for the first four petitions, I'll go ahead and read them in. However, they are considered moot as variances were granted last month, and these were simply continued in the event that those variances were appealed. So I'll go ahead and read these in, and I'm looking for a motion to have all four of these deemed moot from the board. So the first petition was the Governor's Hill Petition Equitable Waiver of Dimensional Requirements under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing leach field to remain 13 feet from the side property line, whereas 20 feet is required. The parcel located 22 Constance Street in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation District's Tax Map 6D Lot 104, Case ZBA 2023-06. The next one is an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under Section 3.02.4 of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing rock retaining wall to remain 1.6 feet at its closest point from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. It is the same location, Case ZBA 2023-05. The third for Governor's Hill Corp. is the Appeal of an Administrative Decision Issued on December 13th, 2022 that determined a newly installed 2022 leach field shall adhere to the town's 20-foot property line setback despite being installed on a legal non-conforming lot of record. Parcels located at the same location, Case ZBA 2023-03. And the last petition is an appeal of an administrative decision issued on December 13th, 2022 that determined a rock retaining wall that is over four feet in height is considered a structure and is subject to setback requirements. Parcels located 22 Constance Street in the R1 Residential by Soils, same location, Case ZBA 2023-04.
I make a motion that we deemed these four petitions moot since a variance has been granted on the subject matter.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Rodney, seconded by Lynn, all in favor? Aye, 4-0-0. All right. That brings us to Brianna Pelletier, petitioner in Penetech Square LLC owner, special exception under Section 2.02.3 C1 of the zoning ordinance to permit a dog grooming salon use in the C2 General Commercial District. Parcels located 709 Milford Road, Suite 6A in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation District's Tax Map 2B, Lot 360, Case ZBA 2023-09. And when you come up, if you could just make sure the microphone's illuminated, and please state your name and your location.
No. Should be bright green. Gotcha. There you go. Okay. My name is Brianna Pelletier, asking for a special exception for the operation of a dog grooming salon business. This specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development, because there is a need for dog grooming in the area. In this plaza alone, there is an existing veterinary hospital, and this location is easily accessible to several neighboring towns, just bringing more business to the town of Merrimack overall. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, because this business will be a quiet, one-on-one dog grooming service. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, because there are safety measures put in place to prevent any incidences. And I actually have installed a half door to prevent any dogs from, you know, running out of the salon. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, because equipment and tools are required for the services offered.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board? This seems extremely straightforward. So what I'll do is I'll go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of the special exception? Anyone looking to speak against this special exception? And I'll go ahead and close. Do I hear a motion?
I also move.
Are you reading in the motion?
Yeah. You need me to read? Okay.
Yep.
I move that we approve the special exception under Section 2.02.3, Capital C1 of the zoning ordinance to permit a dog grooming salon use in the C2 General Commercial District. The parcel is located at 709 Milford Road, Suite 6A in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation District's Tax Map 2B, Lot 360, Case Number ZBA 2023-09.
Hey Lynn, unfortunately, on the back of the staff memo, there's a suggested motion, because of the change in state law, we have to make specific findings.
Okey-dokey. All right, I'll do this one. I move that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the ordinance's criteria are sufficient. Proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings of fact. And further, to grant the special exception under Section 2.02.3 C1 of the zoning ordinance to permit a dog grooming salon use in the C2 General Commercial District, with the condition that the petitioner shall obtain administrative approval from the Community Development Department for the proposed use.
Okay, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, 4-0-0. So just so you know, there's a 30-day window where somebody could appeal this, but it's unlikely. So just letting you know.
Which unit are you going into?
6A, used to be a hair salon.
Okay.
That's not the one that was the barber shop, is it?
No, barber shop is still there. There was one. It's been a hair salon for, I guess, 30 years.
Oh, okay.
It's right there in the same area, though.
Yeah. Same plaza.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Beside the pastries.
Yeah.
All right, the next petition is for Merrimack Parcel A LLC petitioner and Merrimack Park Place condominium owner. Extension request for a variance under Section 2.02.4 of the zoning ordinance for a mixed-use development conditional use permit to be sought from the planning board at a higher residential density than was originally approved by variance in 2015. On a lot that is in the industrial district, the extension request relates to the variance granted on 3/31 of 2021. Parcels located 10 Premium Outlet Boulevard in the I2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts in the Wellhead Protection Area Tax Map 3C, Lot 191-02, Case ZBA 2021-05.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Goddysman &amp; Hollis at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua, and I'm here representing the owner and the applicant, Merrimack Parcel A LLC.
Before we get started, may I just swear you in? I don't think I swore you in when you came in.
I think I arrived just after.
Yeah, if you could just raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. The property is identified as Map C Lot 191-2, having an address at 10 Premium Outlets Boulevard. The zoning board of adjustment application was heard and variance granted on March 31, 2021, as indicated on the notice. I believe you have a letter in your file requesting an extension, and that's what I'm here for this evening. I'd like to give a little bit of background in case either the public or members of the board weren't around two years ago. But the parcel is part of an area currently under development at the entrance to the Outlets Mall. Stepping back, the beginning of the property development in this area is this is one remaining piece of a very larger parcel of land. Those of you who have been here as long as I have, remember it prior to digital. It includes what's now known as Fidelity, Whittier Place, the Outlets, and now this area, Merrimack Place, where there are some new apartments going in. You see them up as you go by. The original grand plan was for mixed uses. I would call it the original, very original in this area of a work, live, play motto, where you're going to have some housing. As I say, Whittier Place, you're going to have Fidelity. You're going to have now the Outlets, and then this last component of it, which is a mixed use in and of itself. This parcel was cut out from the original Premium Outlets parcel. It's a mixed-use development as granted by this board by variance in 2015. It has some site plan approvals, and that's what you see going on in place. There's a conditional use permit in place, but due to changes in the economy and demand, an application was made in 2019 for a variance to allow additional 208 residential units to be put in to this area. And since that variance, my client's been working extremely hard to get at an amendment to the conditional use permit and then to get a site plan approval. But two years have gone by, or will go by very shortly, and that has not been accomplished. If I might, Mr. Chair, I have these booklets, and I don't want to be intimidating. What's in here are copies of town memos and applications having been made, and they're being submitted not for the content of what they are, but really to back up a timeline that's the first page in here. So I think a timeline is important. The standard of proof that we have to reach is your standard ordinance says we have to demonstrate it was either impossible or impracticable to get to the site plan approval process within the two-year period. The statute, which is interesting, the New Hampshire statute, and zoning is an enabling action. Locals can only act under whatever the state law authorizes. The statute says, "Variances shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of final approval or as further extended by local ordinance or by the zoning board of adjustment for good cause." So statute says I have to demonstrate good cause. Your local ordinance says impossible or impracticable. I think we can meet that, impracticable, so I'm not here making an argument your ordinance is wrong. I just call it to your attention, there's a competing standard between the statute and the local, and that's really more for Robert's benefit. He may want to take it up with the town council as to that issue. In any event, we have to meet that standard, that it was either impossible or impracticable. And to do so, I'd like to introduce these booklets, which have, under the first page, a timeline with a list of activities. And then under each of the other tabs are quickly run through what they are, but they support the timeline, just so that I don't have to clearly enunciate what was done each time. Again, I don't want anybody to be intimidated or feel they need to look at what's in here other than the mere volume of what's involved every time you make an application for a CUP permit. So if I might?
So just so you know, we're not allowed to...
Accept any. So I can read them, and that's what I'll do. I just thought it might be easier if you at least had them. I didn't prepare a thing to put in, a fob, but I'll read the timeline, because I'm allowed to do that, and then I will reference what the documents are. And so if anyone wants them, I will have them here if you decide not to decide it this evening. However, having done that, the memorandum of the timeline is, "On March 31st, a variance was granted by the zoning board of adjustment with two conditions. Obtain the approval for amended CUP from the planning board, and obtain an approval for site plan from the planning board." April 30, so it was granted, March 31. April 30, a request for rehearing was made by the abutters. May 26, a rehearing, that rehearing request was denied by the zoning board of adjustment. That's somewhat critical in that there's a delay, and no one can start until the decision on the rehearing. The rehearing's done, and then there's the appeal period of 30 days after the rehearing is denied. So June 26. So while it was granted and final on March 31, we weren't really able to do anything until the appeal period ran, in case the abutters filed an appeal from the denial. From July 1st of 2021 through January of 2022, a seven-month period, engineering design work was done on incorporating approved 208 units into the CUP plan. And I've submitted a document which demonstrates sort of what a CUP plan, it's in here, but it's this thick. It's a lot of engineering work. And I have here this evening Dave Fenstermacher of VHB, who worked on it during that time, and he can answer any questions you may have about what goes into preparing a CUP plan. In early February 2022, the conceptual plan for the 208 units for the CUP amendment was submitted to the planning board. On April 1, my client received the memorandum of the staff as to this amended CUP concept plan. And the memorandum is also in this booklet, but the memorandum was two pages long, and it essentially said, I'm sorry, not two pages long. Not sure how long it was, but it essentially said there's a problem. And then we went to the planning board for a conceptual discussion on April 5, where the planning board gave feedback somewhat along the lines of the staff memorandum, and said that they didn't particularly like the application for a lot of reasons. And quite frankly, I was not involved in that, but my client is here this evening, and he would testify if you ask questions, and Mr. Fenstermacher is here. That came as a surprise to them. They had invested a fair amount of engineering and effort incorporating 208 units into this CUP application, which had previously been commercial in a parking garage. So all of that preliminary engineering work was done, and the concept plan was presented to the planning board, and the feedback was, this is not what the planning board wanted to see. So after that, my client stepped back, retained a new land planner, Gordon Leedy, who had previously been involved in land planning of this project way in the very beginning, and had also been involved with the land planning of the Merrimack Outlets. He was brought in specifically to try to land plan based upon the comments received by staff and comments received by the planning board. In October of 2025 of 2022, so we're now approximately a year and three months after the final date of the appeal period having been run, a new concept, which tried to respond to the comments of the planning board, was submitted. And on November 9, a memorandum of six pages from Tim Thompson with a number of attachments, again, that's here, but it's a public record, was received by my client, and it's hard to categorize it other than lambasting my client for not having followed what he thought they should follow. And it had a lot of criticism and dissatisfaction with the concept. To put it as clearly as I can, Mr. Thompson and the planning board's concern has been over the issue of density and mixed use. As you know, you granted a variance for density for 208 units. And the planning board's position is, well, that's what the density was allowed by the zoning board, but we have the ultimate call on density. Density is not defined under the current conditional use permit. The same with mixed use, there was dissatisfaction that we now have a lot of residential and less commercial in this mixed-use plan, and the CUP amendment as proposed adds more residential than commercial. And there was a lot of dissatisfaction with that, even though, as I say, the mixed use is not a defined term in the ordinance as well. So my client took a step back, tried to redefine the application, redetermine what could be done, but knowing time was near, had to get an application for an amended conditional use permit completed. Those packages are thick, there's a lot of engineering. All of the sewer and water has to be analyzed, everything has to be presented, and it was done on December 27 of last year. So this is the third design now, December 27. It was scheduled for a hearing on January 17, and it was presented to the planning board on January 17 on the first hearing for an amendment of the conditional use permit. At that time, there were further comments of the planning board, still a fair level of dissatisfaction at the number of units, because the units didn't change, just the layout. Following that hearing, it was continued to February 7. Between January 17 and February 2, my clients again took note of the comments of the planning board and the staff report, which was delivered, and have made a significant revision of the plan, reducing the units from 208 down. That submittal was then made to the planning board on February 3, with the hope that we would be on the planning board agenda for February 7. Meanwhile, I applied here, as you know, to extend, just in case we ran into problems, because we weren't going to get to a site plan in time to vest. On February 6, Mr. Thompson determined that there needed to be a completely new submittal of all traffic narrative and fiscal impacts based upon this new plan. My team organized, they had to be in by the 14th, organized, did all the work, and submitted them by the 14th. And at that point, the town staff determined appropriately, I must say, we agree with them, that this needs to be re-advertised, because it is significantly fewer residential units and an increase in the commercial. As a result, on February 21, we got a notice that'd be new hearings, notices going out, and it's going to be pushed out beyond March 7. So that's the timeline of where we have come, and what has been going on for the almost two-year period. As I say, it was reduced at the beginning by four months, and then we've had this back and forth going on with redesign of late. So why is all of this important? I think what's important is to meet the standard of impracticability. We have to show what we've done and show that it was really impractical to meet that criteria. And I think the most important thing I can say to this board is, this is a very significant issue for the planning board and for the town and for the applicant. And we were surprised in February, which set this back a full six to nine months. We were surprised that we thought the density was not an issue, because it had been decided by this board. But it clearly is an issue, and we've tried to address it, and we're continuing to try to address it. My client wants to have a first-class, blue-ribbon project there and wants to work with the planning board. As I say, we've just resubmitted again. I think I did ask my client and Dave, what is a reasonable timeframe for wrapping this up? And I think the answer is, it's hard to tell with the planning board. Part of the difficulty with the planning board is, because there is no definition of density or mixed use, it's really in the eyes of the planning board of what they perceive to be appropriate density and appropriate mixed use. So we're having this sort of, we'll suggest that, no, that's rejected. We'll suggest that, no, that's rejected. And now we've come back again, and we hope we're getting on the same page of understanding what the planning board wants and what we are able to provide. We hope we're there. It's certainly not a delay that we want either. Then, after the planning board decides on the amendment to the conditional use permit, we have a site plan process, which those of you who might be familiar with that process know that it takes, it'll take about six weeks to develop the site plan and submit it. Then it'll take the planning board and the staff and the sort of the review, engineering review, consultant review, probably another two months. So in the very least, we're going to be out there nine months, possibly a year. I know it was advertised, and I saw the suggested motion, and the staff is two years. We certainly hope it doesn't come to that, but if you feel free to give us that two years, we would appreciate it. Our goal is to keep this thing moving. Our goal is also to continue to work to the planning board, which we can't do if you don't extend us.
So just to clarify, ultimately, what you're looking for is an extension on the variance because of the back and forth with the planning board regarding the conditional use permit?
That's correct. Not for lack of trying, not for lack, I mean, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of engineering gone into this already. So not for lack, but just impracticality of not knowing what the planning board wanted and now trying to meet that.
Okay.
It's an unusual, because it's mixed use, because there's a density issue, it is clearly an unusual issue before the planning board and for us.
Okay.
And we've tried to listen to the abutters about the density as well.
Anyone on the board have questions regarding this?
Just a quick question. This project continues to be built, correct?
The part that's been approved is under construction. That's correct. The apartments that are there are under construction. As you come into the Outlets Boulevard, you'll see on the left those apartment buildings. And as you continue around the curve, there is an open area, which is undeveloped yet. There's some clearing where some foundation footings have been put in, and that's for commercial uses. There is nothing going on where the residential is proposed. There have been four iterations of that site area, and we're hoping this fourth one is the one.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? All right, so I think what I'll do at this point is open this up to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this extension? Is there anyone that's looking to speak against this extension? Okay. And sir, I don't think you were sworn in. If I could just have you raise your right hand? And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
My name is Michael Mills. I live at 7 Arbor Street here in the town of Merrimack. I'm not an abutter, but I live close to the area that this project is being proposed at. First off, so much to cover. This has been going on for eight years. If I understood the presentation properly, we're requesting an extension for another two years. I've attended just about every planning board meeting. And certainly over the past several meetings, the problem is that you cannot build... And certainly over the past several meetings, the problem is that you cannot build two hundred and eight units, two hundred feet from the abutters' property lines. You can't build a five-story building fifty, sixty feet wide that is going to light up the entire neighborhood. And the planning board has made us very clear, they have made it clear every, I believe every single member of the planning board has spoke, that that is not what should be built there. The town does not allow forty units per acre to be built, and certainly not within a couple hundred feet of other people's property lines. We have, I represent several of the neighbors there in the area. We have another speaker that's going to come up and, and speak as well. But the whole problem is, is that this has gotten, it just continues and continues and continues, and to come before this board and say, could you grant us another extension, is absurd. The representation that was give and take with the planning board is false. Everybody on the planning board said, this is too much to be built on a five or six-acre lot. You cannot build two hundred and eight units. That's forty units per, per acre. Forty units per acre. We have a half-acre lot. I, I should be here before the planning and before the zoning board saying, I want to build twenty units? That's ridiculous. It's ridiculous to build two hundred and eight units on five or six acres of land. It doesn't fit. It just simply doesn't fit. Coming in with another plan, well, I have no idea what the other plan is going to show, but it can't be any different than the other plans that have been repeatedly rejected by the planning board. They've had ample time to come before the planning board and make a reasonable presentation, a presentation that wouldn't affect the neighbors, that wouldn't light up our backyards, that wouldn't cause traffic coming into their project, because they got a waiver that they don't have to do any off-site work until, until they're ready to do it. This has to come to an end, and I'm here respectfully asking this, this, this board to deny another extension. It's not necessary. It's been going on for eight years. You stop and think, let's say there's four meetings a, a year, five meetings a year. There's been forty hearings on, on this issue, and, and it's going nowhere. Please do not extend this. There's no need to extend it. The plans that have been presented to the planning board have all been the same, and the climate has always been the same. You're putting too much into a five-acre lot. It doesn't work. I don't know what the outcome of the gentleman was that had proposed on a nineteen thousand square foot lot to build six units. My gosh, that, that's, that's nothing. That's only twelve units per acre. We're talking about forty. Forty units on, on, on an acre of land. Picture someone building forty acres, forty units right behind your house on an acre of land.
So for what we're talking about tonight?
Is an extension.
Yes, we've already, we've already granted the variance, and even if we weren't to grant the extension, they can always come back for another variance.
That, that's correct. May I, again, just summarize here by saying, please correct the error that this board made when it granted two hundred and eight units on a five or six-acre lot. This is your opportunity to correct that mistake. Please do that. Please deny an extension any longer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else looking to speak against this petition? If you could please raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
My name is Beth Burns. I live at Five Spruce Street, so I am a direct abutter to this property. The last meeting we came to with the other board members involved, I shared with them a picture of the view from behind my house, and that the current apartment building that's there, you know, you drive by, oh, there's a few trees there and stuff. Once I get to my, I won't see it. That's bull, okay? It looks, you know, like when we, like in our mirrors that I said the last, objects in mirror closer than they appear. This apartment building is a hell of a lot closer than you may think. And this is the current one. You want to put another one right behind it, right up, almost up against the emergency exit? The, the current apartment building looks like it's up against the emergency exit. That's how huge it is. And I don't care what anyone, and I, and I've been more than kind and tried to be understanding with Tom and other people that work with him. Reg, I, I understand, you're a business person, you own the property, you have rights, and you, you have, you know, the love of money and power. I understand that, okay? But this would not be, this, the situation would be totally different if I owned property behind his home, McGrady Park. This whole situation would be different. There's no way in God's name he would want this behind his home that he worked for, okay? I had to work two jobs from my house for over ten years, two jobs from my house to keep the house and the upkeep of it and the care and to raise two kids in it. The last thing any of us deserve in the middle-class neighborhood there is to lose all that because of these apartment buildings that are too large for the space involved. We've gone over this over and over again for eight-plus years. We've gone over it for the past couple of years, left and right, that there's no room for something this large. It needs to stop. It, it doesn't matter, well, I own this many acres of property, that doesn't mean you have room for something so large. We still haven't, it's been addressed more than once about the traffic coming in and out, and where are people going to go in and out, coming in and out from the apartment and in and out from the outlets to go there? It's going to be a complete issue back there. We've talked about this. All you have to do is drive by and look at it, or walk there and look at it, and it's more than, you don't have to have a college degree. You just go, it's common sense. You go in and look at it. The space is not going to be enough for what they're doing, and we sure as heck don't have enough room to add another enormous New York City-sized apartment building there at all. I've shared it with the other, and I've told everybody, you're more than welcome to come to my house, okay? And look at, it's even more obvious from my backyard, okay, how this is. And this, this is at night, okay? Not during the day, it's just as visible. There's my fence line. This is me standing in the yard. It's huge. It's more than obvious that it's there. To put something else that large there is disgraceful, I'm sorry. And I know someone else would feel the same if situations were reversed. Truth, if he respects my house as much as I, his home as much as I do, and my family and my town that I've worked for. I mean, honestly, again, I understand owns property, doesn't mean it has the space for things this large. And I know you've seen this, but show me. It's, I'm trying to, I've, I've gone left and right over eight years, trying to see both sides of the coin, okay? We snapped at each other, I've said, you know, I've tried to be respectful, left and right, and understand things from a business perspective, when I started, I can look easily, look at both sides of the coin, look at something from a businessman's perspective and a homeowner, okay? And it's not a cherry case that we're trying to sound like.
Can you come back to the microphone?
We just don't, it's just not, I'm just, it's just not the space for something this large to continue. It's too much, and it's just, again, we need to really look at this from a realistic point of view, and I, and I really pray the town can see this for what it really is. And we have to put our feet down, and we have to come to a better understanding and a better plan for the remaining area over there. That's all I'm asking for, a better, more realistic, respectful plan that works. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that's looking to speak regarding this petition? Sir, if you want to come back up?
Thank you again for the record, Morgan Hollis, thirty-nine East Pearl Street in Nashua. Briefly, in response to Mr. Mills' comments, most of which dealt with the concern about the actual application, and the same with Ms. Burns, there, there are comments about what they like or don't like about the plan. I think that that supports our application, that why we have to be at the planning board to have this back-and-forth. You've already granted the density. My client thought that that was going to be the case. We now know that there are other issues, and we want to work with the town, so we need more time to do that, and we ask you to do that. But specifically in terms of comments that were made, that, the statement that my representation, the give and take is false, is simply not true. There has been considerable give and take. There has been discussion about increasing the commercial, reducing or increasing the number of units in the hotel, reducing the number of units in the, of the apartment building, finding more open space, and this is what we're proceeding with. And so there has been give and take. There have been, as I say, four different plans submitted to the planning board, so if that's not give and take, I don't know what is. We know that the neighbors don't want what's been presented, and we're trying to come to terms with what the planning board is willing to accept. But without a specific standard, it becomes a proposal, denial, proposal, denial, when we're willing to continue in that process. The representation that this matter, about which Mr. Mills spoke, has been going on for eight years, is simply not true. It's been going on for two years. It's you granted a variance, and we've been up before the planning board. That's the issue before you, not the greater development, because one could wrap that back into the outlets. When it was first presented, there might be something here. It's just simply this issue, the two hundred and eight units and how they fit on the site. And two years would normally be okay, but in this case, it is not, because we've run into what I've described. The fact that there have been forty hearings on this issue, again, a false statement. There have not been forty issues, forty hearings on the issue of two hundred and eight units and an amended CUP. There actually have been very few public hearings on it. There have been concept plan discussions and a public hearing. The fan, fact that the plans have all been the same, that is a false statement as well, as I said. The density is too much. As I say, it's, you've decided the density. We're asking you to give us more time to work with the planning board to resolve that density. All of the points made are points that have been made at the planning board and will continue to be made at the planning board, but don't, they don't pertain to the issue of whether we meet the standard of impracticality in meeting our two-year commitment, and I think we've demonstrated that. I'm going to ask you for your vote. Thank you.
So I do have a question.
Yes.
How many proposals did you submit to the planning board that had failed?
We've had two concepts that have been discussed and not, and been deemed not what the planning board's looking for. And then we have an application, which was discussed at a public hearing, and that application receives considerable negative feedback, not just from the public, but from the planning board. And so we have gone, taken a step back and made a significant change in the number of units. And that application is in, but has not been heard yet.
So there are fewer than two hundred and eight units in the new plan?
In the new plan, that's correct.
How many units are in the new plan, just out of curiosity?
One seventy-eight.
One seventy-eight.
Okay. All right.
I might also point out, there were comments about, I understand Ms. Burns' comments about the height of the building, the lights and everything, and her neighbor, but understand what was approved and is approved. At one point was a parking garage, which was six stories, and a commercial block square building with windows facing that direction at the same point, same distance from the house. That was all approved, went through, that plan was approved. These units are replacing that. So the problem, the simple problem is replacing what was approved with units, and how they fit and what they look like and what impacts they have, and we're trying to be the best neighbor we can and the best, have the best development of that area as possible. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, any final thoughts or questions from the board?
So you had a six-story parking garage. How high was the commercial portion?
Five or six.
It's actually a hundred and seventy-something options that directly above the.
In the very beginning, there were a hundred and seventy apartments and a parking garage, and then the apartments moved to the, to where they're being built now, and there was an alternative commercial building put there. So the commercial building went away, but the apartments were there in the very original plan, very.
It was a commercial building.
It was either five or six stories, the commercial building?
About a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand square-foot building.
All right. Any further questions from the board? All right.
Thank you.
Yes, you have your hand raised, if you want to come back up?
Michael Mills, Seven Arbor Street. The statements that were just made are so misleading. They advertise this part, and I know this is a zoning board, but you have to have the right information. The building, five stories, six stories, seven stories, they advertise it as a four-story apartment building. There was actually five stories, parking garage and four stories above. That's five stories, not four. To say that they made substantial changes to the plan, going from forty units to approximately thirty-five, if my math is correct, per acre, doesn't make a whole lot of difference. That is not a substantial change. I'm not even sure that is a change. I do, I, I don't know if the board will answer this question, but how conceivably could this board determine that a hundred, two hundred and eight units on five acres of land is reasonable? There is nothing in the town of Murmuk that's close to that, and from what I understand, listening to the planning board, there's nothing in the state of New Hampshire that's close to that. How could this board make a determination that two hundred and eight units on an acre, on five acres of land is reasonable? You have an obligation to represent the property owners in our town, and I thank you. I sincerely thank everyone on this board for their time and effort. But two hundred and eight units is absurd? Hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-six, whatever the number is, is absolutely ridiculous. That doesn't belong in Nash, in Murmuk, and it doesn't belong in our backyard, and this board has the right to not continue the extension, not, not, not grant the extension, and have the developer come back in and say, okay, I'm only going to build X number of units, and have the zoning board consider that? You have that op, you have that opportunity to do that, and I strongly recommend that the, that the zoning board say, no, we're not going to extend it. If you'd like to come back in with another request for the number of units that's more reasonable, then we will certainly entertain that. But no, we are not going to grant an extension of this plan, and it has been going on since two thousand fifteen. I'm a math major. I can subtract twenty twenty-two from two thousand fifteen, come up with eight years. And I'll tell you, I've gone to more than two or three meetings. I go to two or three, I've gone to two or three meetings in the last couple of months on this thing. This just doesn't end. Let's start with a reasonable number of units, granted by a variance if necessary, and then give it to the planning board to look at and say, yes, this is going to work, or no, it's not going to work. Let's not just blindly say, great, let's give him two more years to figure out what he's doing with this property. He's had eight already. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I think at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion and, I guess, Lynn, have you been on some of these planning board meetings? Do you have any thoughts?
What the abutters are saying is correct.
What the abutters are saying is correct. That, and I believe this is what the planning board has been saying all along, is too many residential units. Um, when this was first proposed, I thought it was a great project. Um, you had commercial, you had retail, you had the hotel. And every time there's a change that comes, it's reducing all of the other facets of it and increasing the residential. I understand the business model. I understand what's going on in the real estate industry. I'm a broker. I know what this is, and I know you don't have much option because that's what's wanted, that's what's desired. Business-wise, maybe not, but, but that's what they're looking for. Listening to Tony Hollis's description tonight, I believe they have shown that they have done their due diligence in trying to get something approved during the past two years. So I don't feel that, at least I personally, can deny them the extension. But I also believe that the planning board is going to continue to push. And I believe you're both, you're starting to hear what the planning board is pushing for. And I think if you keep coming up with this huge density, I think the planning board is going to keep saying, go back and redo it. So I think you've got to listen to the planning board and work with them to get to where you want to be, to something that's acceptable for you business-wise, as well as acceptable to the town and the abutters. So I'm, I'm willing to make a motion to grant their extension. And I've had my say.
My, um, may I?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, my thoughts are, I, I, I feel for the, the abutters. But before us is the, the petition is proof to prove to us that they made every effort in the past two years to make what was approved happen. Um, and as Lynn said, uh, I also believe that they have made attempts, from what Lynn has confirmed, they said. Um, so again, I would lean towards, as much as I'm not wildly excited about huge, tall buildings, um, in, in Murmuk, I would lean towards approving the extension.
So I'll, I'll be, I guess, the first to say that I'm, I'm kind of sitting in the opposition from here. Um, and the, the reason, my, my reason's actually a little bit different than, than what's been discussed tonight. I just, uh, um, my perception here, and obviously I would have to watch all of the, uh, planning board, uh, meetings, is that um, two years has been sufficient for other petitions to, uh, do the necessary homework to, to get things passed at the planning board. So I feel like if this is something that keeps getting brought up over and over and again at the planning board, we may wind up here again in, you know, another two years doing the same thing. So, um, I, I'm happy to entertain a motion. I'm just not really in favor of it.
My, my answer in two years would be very different than what it is tonight. I believe they are starting to hear what the planning board has been saying. And I think they've been trying to, to respond to what the planning board has been saying, but just not sufficient to where they need to be. So I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt there and but the ears ought to be open because the planning board at some point is going to say, we're just not going to do this.
I go along with that. I, I have confidence in the planning board to try and work with them. And I'm hoping that the planning board stands firm to what needs to be done.
They have so far.
Um, and with that in mind, again, in two years or a year and a half, should they come back to us, whatever the, the timeframe, um, my answer would be absolutely different. I just think what has happened to get this project initially started, it's hit some roadblocks or, or barriers. Um, and it sounds like the planning board and the petitioner are trying to work together. Whether that will come to fruition or not, it's come back in two years.
It does take some time to do the land use and, and engineering that needs to be done when you're, when you're doing it. Unfortunately, the understanding of what the, the board, planning board has been asking for did not get through. So that the, the new plans that were coming through just didn't get there. Uh, but it does take time to do those plans, so, um, I can understand where, where they're coming from. Um, and I think I, I just feel like they have shown the due diligence over the past two years to try and get to where they thought they were going. And I think are, are now starting to hear what the real issues are.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I also move that the board finds the petition has adequately demonstrated to the zoning board of adjustment that it was impossible or impractical to receive the necessary approvals to move forward within two years of the variance being granted. And the board adopts the petition's responses as the board's finding a fact and further to grant a two-year extension of the variance originally granted on March 31st, 2021, as authorized under section 8.04 of the zoning ordinance.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Rod. All in favor? All opposed? All right, 3-1-0. You have two more years. Thank you.
May I thank the board for addressing the issue of 208 units that you already voted in? Thank you for talking about that.
Thank you. All right, do we have any discussion of other items? All right, any discussion or motion for, uh?
Make a motion that we accept the meetings of the zoning board of adjustment Wednesday, January 25th, 2023.
All right, motion made by Rodney, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so 3-0-1.
I didn't even watch it.
That's why you need to abstain.
I, I, I think, I think for entertainment reasons, you definitely should watch it.
I usually do, but something was going on, I don't know.
All right.
We're done.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
I second.
All in favor? All right. Have a great night, everyone.